Sorry, I don't have a gavel. Somebody stole it on me.[5.12][5.12](Laughter). We were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, January 4th, 2016. I'd ask that you please rise for a brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we begin the year 2016, we are ever mindful of the many blessings and opportunities for further development of our community on a good side that we are in having our offing. We are thankful for all these blessings, and we are specifically thankful for all the dedicated employees who serve us 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. As we've seen over the past holiday season, there was a number of occasions when they were called away from their families during holiday times, also a number of times when they were challenged because of overwhelming weather conditions. So, we are just thankful that everybody made it through in a safe and guarded manner, and we are just thankful for all the blessings that we have been showered upon. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a blessing be shown to each and every one of them, along with all those others from our country who are so ably serving. Tonight, as always, we just ask for guidance and direction and insight as we act upon the various affairs of business that are on our agenda, knowing that each member of the council is here to do what in their own hearts and minds is in the very best interests of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Callahan, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Alderman Stark is absent. Chanzet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Alderman Mueller is absent. Bottermann.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Okay, and let the record reflect that we have 12 of the 14 elected members of the City Council present and accounted for, including Alderman Fisher, who is on the phone, and the city attorney advises me that we do not need to make a motion to allow him to attend the meeting. We only need to make a motion if we don't want him to attend the meeting. So, I don't think anybody wants to make that motion, so we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack, do you have anything as Government Service Chairman?
Yes, we need to add collective bargaining to the closed session, item number 20. I think that's it.
Anything, anybody in the council of anything that they want to?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion to amend the agenda as approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals: Account payable check register, $292,832.37; City Council minutes for December 21st, 2015; and the approval and release of the City Council closed meetings, April 5th, 1982 as redacted; January 3rd, 1995; February 6th, 1995; February 21st, 1995; March 20th; April 3rd; June 19th; July 17th; September 5th; and December 18th, 1995; February 5th; April 4th; April 15th; May 6th; August 19th; and September 3rd, 1996; December 2nd, 1996; January 6th; March 17th; January 6th, 1997; March 17th; April 7th; June 16th; July 7th; July 21st; September 2nd; September 15th; November 11th; November 17th; and December 1st; and December 15th, 1997; January 5th, 1998; January 19th; March 2nd; March 24th; May 4th; May 18th; June 6th; July 6th; September 8th; October 19th; November 30th; December 7th, 1998; January 4th; February 1st; April 5th; April 19th; August 2nd; August 16th; September 20th; October 4th; November 11th, 1999; March 6th; March 20th; April 3rd; May 1st; June 5th; June 19th; July 3rd; August 7th, 2000; February 19th, 2001 as redacted; March 5th, 2001; December 15th, 2008. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Consent agendas approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving to item number six on our agenda, which are matters from the public. For items not on the agenda, do we have anybody who wants to address this this evening? Okay, moving to item number seven, which is tonight's presentation by the Batavia Chamber. We have Holly Dykman, the Executive Director. Holly?
Thank you, Mayor, and happy 2016 to all of you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity again this year to present each month a little highlight, events that are coming up at the Batavia Chamber, and we also like to introduce one of our newest members. So, I will get to that in just a second, but we do have two major events that I wanted to mention to you coming up this month. On January 14th at 11:30 a.m., we will be working with the St. Charles Chamber of Commerce to bring you Michael Freericks, the Illinois State Treasurer. He will be hosting a luncheon for all of us to attend, and that will be at Pheasant Run in St. Charles. So, if anyone is interested in joining, please check out the registration page on the Chamber website for that event. It should be great. Obviously, there's a lot of changes for 2016, some of them on the financial side for the state, so he'd be a great resource for all of us to reach out to and ask questions of about things that are coming up in 2016. Also, our major event of the Batavia Chamber, which is our Inspire Awards Event, that will be held on Friday, January 29th, from 6 until 8 p.m. at the Lincoln Inn Banquets in Batavia. This is when we have the opportunity to present our Citizen of the Year Award. This year will be given to Ms. Joanne Spitz. If you don't know her, I'm surprised. She is a quintessential volunteer, wonderful human being, and someone that I am very proud that our selection committee has selected for the 2015 Citizen of the Year. She has been and had hands in everything from the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence to chip in Batavia, one of the founding members of that wonderful organization recently. Batavia Bicycle Commission, you name it, she's been a part of it, and all of it is out of the good and giving kindness of her heart. So, please help us to celebrate her and the idea of giving back to our community at our event. We also have and present the Ole Awards that evening, which have been going on for upwards of 58 years in Batavia, which is giving back to the businesses that have invested or reinvested in the city of Batavia to either expand or redevelop their properties in Batavia and made some contributions through that. So, we have 11 recipients this year, many of them. We had three special awards that were given out. Thank you to Alderman Callahan with all of his help with the selection of each of those winners, along with the rest of the committee. So, it's an exciting night. We typically have over 200 people from the community and businesses that come out that evening to show their support of development and are giving back through volunteerism to our community. So, encourage you to join us that evening and celebrate that with us. That's it for events. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I would also like to introduce to you Mr. Patrick Moynihan. He has passed out to each of you a flyer and a business card, and he is the owner at Waveform here in Batavia. So, here is Patrick.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor and City Council and my neighbors for allowing me to be here tonight. To introduce myself again, I'm Patrick James Moynihan. I'm the owner of Waveform LLC located at 711 Main Street here in Batavia. My wife, my daughter, and I are Batavia residents, and we're proud to have a Batavia business. We are a recording and audio/video company, so we produce both audio/video and print media for creatives as well as small business alike. And what I found my greatest asset as a business is, and what I think I can offer to this community, is hopefully my focus to be able to produce and engage, whether you're creative or a small business, your means to communicate your message and do so quickly and effectively and with hopefully engaging media directly. That does mean we do audio work, so we have a state-of-the-art Pro Tools recording facility, 1,500 square foot at 711 Main Street. That space has, boy, we've got too many guitars. My wife laughs at it at the fact that I built a studio around my guitar collection just for a space to store them. At this point, we do record everything from bands and solo artists also into commercial music. So, we do voiceover work, video game design, sound design, things like that. The second component of the business is video development. We do high-definition video development on seven different types of cameras, produce in Adobe Premiere, and this is again for creatives. You'll notice actually on that flyer there, the left-hand side in the middle is local artist Greg Burner performing at another Batavia business, Kiss the Sky. And in his case, we produce nine videos, just trying to showcase who he was and representing his material in the world. We do that same thing, though, for small business, trying to help capture who really are you speaking with when you're trying to find a website? Who is the owner of the business? Who might be your salesperson? How do we help them connect in an everyday fashion with what they do and how they might serve their customers? And hopefully open the door. I think the social media world in particular is a great area where we're going to continue to see growth in video work. The other piece of the business is our print media development company. So, that side of the business, what we do there is everything from paper substrates, business cards, brochures, posters, banners, all the way through trade show arrangements and otherwise. So, at this point, we can print on everything from aluminums and sheets, goods, to vinyl prints, and all over the board. Pretty wild to see the alignment in the creative world and in small business, how we need to hopefully communicate what we do in a clean, succinct way and keep a consistent brand. And the important thing that I want to thank you all tonight for and my neighbors, we're smack dab in the middle of the West Town Tiff District, and having been here now for 20 some odd years in Batavia and with the intention that my family will continue to be, we're currently a tenant at 711 Main Street with the intention that in the next three to five years, we'd be the landowner at 711. And I'm just excited to partner with my neighbors and to partner with the neighborhood and to partner with you guys to see this area continue to grow and expand. So, thank you so very much, really grateful.
Thank you. On behalf of the community, we want to welcome you to our town. Certainly welcome Waveform and all the great ideas and innovations and services and creativity that you're bringing with us.
Thank you.
So, thank you for all you're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you so very much.
All right. Moving then to a presentation about the Batavia Access Toy Drive. Mr. Bailey and Mr. Dubus?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I don't know if, Mayor, if we were in the same spot or whatever, but we're both talking the same here tonight, so I don't know what that's all about, but anyway, I'm going to have Rudy talk a little bit about some thank yous before I show you some of the pictures that actually happened for the toy drive.
Thanks, Roy. We'd like to thank a lot of people this evening. First of all, we'd like to thank Mayor Schelke and the City Council for helping us out, as usual. Also, we'd like to thank Aldi's, the SEI Giving Fund, BFC Forms Service Incorporated, Batavia High School, Rotolo Middle School, Hoover Wood, J.B. Nelson, Louise White, H.C. Storm, Alice Gustafson, the Batavia Lions Club, the Batavia Mothers Club, Batavia Women in Business, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, Dottie Fletcher and Mike Fletcher, the Continuum of Care Department at Delano, Jeanette, Lucy, and Rose here at City Hall, the Batavia Fire Department, the Batavia Police Department, Batavia Public Library, Flynn Scientific, Janet Meeks, and the Geneva High School OJT Students, the Batavia High School Football Team, the Batavia High School Baseball Team, the Batavia High School Girls Cross Country Team, Coach Matt Holm, Holy Cross Church, Kevin at the Public Works Department here in Batavia, the Batavia Park District, Calvary Church, Kihi Foods, Dr. Krista Sedelko, Bethany Lutheran Church, Batavia Clothes Closet and Food Pantry, the Kiwanis Club, Sam's Club, and we had a couple individuals, Deb Conan, Julie Studdel, Lay from Fun Express, John Kramer, Ramblin' Ray Stevens from US99, he gave us a bunch of shout-outs, Funway and Crosstown Pub and Grill, and especially all the people that donated toys, gifts, gift cards, or money to the toy drive. We greatly appreciate everything that everybody did for us this year, and Roy will let you know. You'll be able to see some of the pictures of our toy drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank my partner in crime here, Rudy, being with me and my mother and this organization for probably many, 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 many years, and what he's done to make this possible for the kids here in Batavia. Also, I'd like to thank his wife, my wife over here. Finally, I got Christmas, I think, the other day, because she's been down doing the toy drive. My daughter, my son, my son-in-law, my daughter-in-law, grandson, and I guess there's probably, I'm looking on my sheet here, there's 260 people, families, I need to call their names out, that want to thank everybody here in Batavia, because those 260 families had to have got a Christmas because of what the council did and what all these people did here to make a Christmas for everybody in Batavia, all the children. There's a few pictures that I'm going to show you. First of all, I'm going to show you the real fancy pictures that the mayor took. I think maybe I can figure it out, I don't know where we're going. Well, these are some pictures that I took. This is, actually, as you're looking at this picture here, these are the puzzles and the games. There's over 725 puzzles on that wall, and there's probably close to 800 games on those This is the teens room. This is the one we kind of fell in trouble with this year. We came up a little short because we ended up with more teens than we actually had signed up for. On that Sunday, we had roughly about 220 families that showed up. The next three nights, 34 families showed up. So, from that, all of the inventory started to really, really go down, and we didn't expect that. Remember that pretty wall that you saw? That's what's left from the wall. That's the gloves that's left after the show. There's probably close to 900 gloves and hats and mittens on that rack, but everybody in Batavia, every child in Batavia is going to have a warm Christmas and a warm winter by having hats, mittens, and gloves. Remember that pretty wall that you saw, those toys, that all these people back here gave? I would mention to say that these gentlemen and ladies back there handled probably 80% of what you saw up there on all these tables by your donations, bringing it to the fire department, them loading it into the cars, and getting it to the church for all the kids. Books, probably close to another 800, 900 books, that's what's left from the books. Stuffed animals. We're going to show you some new pictures of what this actually looked like, but I want you to see what was actually left, and that was prior to Christmas Eve. We were actually giving toys away on Christmas Eve this year. That is left from the teens, in the teens room. So, I can get to the next slide where the mayors are. Again, here's that room with all the puzzles and games. Take a look at all those hats and mittens. You just saw what happened to them. That's what the tables looked like when we started. You saw what they looked like at the end. That's what the room looks like when we started. That's a puzzle room, game room. All those people back there were helpers for the day. They took people around and made sure everybody could shop, get what they needed for their children. Wow, that's the, my daughter, I call her the warden, she kind of keeps us all in line. Another shot of the whole group. So, with that, I'd like to again thank the community. We fell a little short this year, and we're probably going to start this a little sooner. Not because everybody didn't give what they could give to us this year, but there's a few clubs that are in Batavia that are no longer here. There's a few organizations in Batavia that are no longer here. There's a few families that used to give to the toy drive. They're no longer here. And if you went out and bought a car in the last four or five years, you paid $15,000 for a car, or $16,000 or $17,000 for a car, a car today is $30,000. As you visited the toy stores and someone went in and they bought a toy, five years ago, a toy was worth five bucks or six bucks. Some of the toys came into us and with price tags on them of $25. $30 for a toy. Toys are very expensive, and I get that. We're going to work harder this year, 2016, to make it another banner year. We won't come up short. We came close this time, but I know with the support of the community and all of the clubs, the schools, we'll have another banner year, 2016. Thank you, city. Any questions?
I think the city should thank Mr. Dubus and Mr. Bailey and their wives for really an extraordinary give-it-all performance here on behalf of the kids of Batavia. You guys really rose to the occasion and overcame any adversities that got thrown at you, and at the end of the day, it was pretty much all smiling faces thanks to your efforts. So, I hope you guys celebrated and had a good Christmas, because you, of all the people in this town, were deserving of ones for what you did there in those six weeks before Christmas as we put this thing together. So, thanks, guys, for an outstanding community contribution.
The business women and, they gave us a check for $700 at an event that, I don't know how many years we've been going to that event, but without the Chamber and the business women, I mean, this really got us close to taking care of all of the teens in that room. So, again, thanks, Chamber, and the business women of Batavia stepping up again and including us with all the other organizations to help us make a merry, merry Christmas. Thank you very, very much. Thanks.[1550.51][1550.51](Applause).
Okay, moving to item number nine, we're going to have a quick update on the Pace Batavia Call and Ride Program from Doug Sullivan, who is the Marketing Director for Pace Buses at their office in Arlington Heights. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I get the unenviable task of following that presentation from a couple of people who really went above and beyond the call this holiday season. I happen to live here in Batavia, and it makes me proud to be a Batavian, to see people contribute like that. So, as Mayor Schelke said, I work for Pace, and I'd like to briefly tell you about some changes that took place. On October 26th, so essentially eight or nine weeks ago, Pace changed essentially every single bus route in the southern half of Kane County, including those in Batavia. So, I'd just like to make sure everybody's aware of that. I put one of these in front of everybody's seat, which is a book that has all the maps and schedules of all the services as they exist today. So, as a bit of background, we at Pace started this process of looking into the service here in southern Kane County almost two years ago, did some surveying of the community, did focus groups, surveying of bus riders, essentially trying to answer the question, why has ridership in this area dropped by about 40% since the year 2000? So, in 15 years, a significant drop-off in ridership despite the fact that obviously the population of Aurora has grown by leaps and bounds during that period. So, we need to make sure that, our goal was to make sure that the bus services that we offer the residents here are, serve the destinations that people want to go today as opposed to when these routes may have been created in the '70s or '80s or even before that. So, what happened here locally here in Batavia, if you turn to page 23, you can see that right now, Batavia has, it used to have two bus routes, and those were merged into a single route called Route 802, which starts in downtown Aurora and comes into downtown Batavia, then branches off, one branch going north to the Geneva Metro Station and another branch heading west out towards Randall Road and then up to the Kane County Judicial Center. Batavia previously, well, relatively recently, had a call-and-ride service that I have previously spoken to this body about. That, information about that service is on the next page. That service is a demand-response service, meaning that someone can call the phone number listed here between 6:30 a.m. and 6:50 p.m., and if they are within the zone that's mapped out here, they can call that phone number and reserve a ride with only an hour's notice, get picked up within that zone, and be taken to any other destination within that zone. That service is also designed to pick up people from the train station in Geneva and take them to Fermi Lab as well as other locations as riders choose. So, that's what happened here in Batavia. A little bit about how we're looking to measure the success of these changes A little bit about what, how we're looking to, to measure the success of these changes. Certainly ridership is the main statistic that we judge ourselves by. And it's too early to tell since we only really have one month of date of that being November to, to judge what has happened so far. And the, one of the early stories to tell is that ridership on that Route 802, which goes through Batavia, is up 83% since November. Now that number is a good bit misleading, given that 802 combined with another route that was disbanded that used to go on Randall Road out in the, in the western part of Batavia. So it is also true that one of the, one of the goals of this service was to make it more convenient. So when, the way PACE measures ridership, as does every public transit agency, is that when a person gets on one bus and then transfers to a second bus, that counts as two trips. So if a person, if we redesign the service and someone can get on one bus and get to their destination, that counts as one trip. So if, if we make it more convenient for the riders, our ridership would drop by 50% under that scenario. Now, of course, that doesn't happen in, in all cases. But a more accurate measure of how useful the system is and how much the customers are valuing it is by passenger miles of travel. Now that's a much more complicated measure to develop and we certainly haven't done that yet for, for, since the changes took place just two months ago. But once we do develop that, that data, we'll be able to better track, is this, are these changes working and did the, did the customers value what, what we tried to do here? Certainly we, you know, all the, all the input leading up to it, the public hearings, the, the public meeting, the surveying that we did, all of that led us to believe that these changes were going to be a positive thing. You know, service later into the evening, more frequent service is all part of what we did here. So we think that these are all positive changes. We hope that that is eventually borne out in the data that we see. So we'll, we'll look forward to, to seeing those results in the, in the year ahead. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Well, we thank PACE for what they're doing, trying to kind of redesign the ridership of Batavia, so we're giving people rides that they really want to take. And I think we're on the road to do that. So appreciate what you're trying to do here.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me.
Thanks, Doug. Okay. We're moving to item number 10. Chief Dyke, I'd ask if you would join me and I'd invite retiring Chief Banker if you would come forward to the podium.
Mayor, would you like me to say a few words first? Okay. Today was Randy Banker's last day, Deputy Chief Banker's last day. He is going to be moving on to become the Fire Chief in Janesville, Wisconsin. So we're very proud of him. He, his career is a long and fulfilling career, I would like to think. He was a mentor to many on the department, both within our department and outside of our department. There are many firefighters on, on a wide variety of departments that have been influenced by him. But he is also, his career is, is very influential to all of my members because he started out as a paid on call and has worked his way up through all the ranks, all the way up to the deputy chief's position. So it just shows that, you know, even though you start out as a paid on call, you know, there's always room for advancement going up to the top if you put the fire service as a high priority on your list like Randy Banker has. He started in Geneva as a paid on call in 1984, was hired in Batavia as a paid on call in 1988, then he was hired full-time here in 1989, became a lieutenant in 1992, battalion chief in 2006, and deputy chief in 2012. He also served as a fire investigator on the department, the health and safety officer, and was a training officer at one time in our department. And then back in 2001, he was nominated and was awarded the firefighter of the year back in 2001. So on behalf of the fire department, Randy, thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for your commitment to the city, to the fire department, and, and I wish you the best of luck in your future.
Chief, on behalf of the members of the City Council and the city employees, I have a plaque I'd like to present to you. And I, before I read the plaque, I'd just like to share, obviously I've been the mayor during the time that Chief Banker's been with the department. And I have one very vivid memory, he and I talked about this afternoon. On Christmas Eve of 1998, about midnight, we had a fatal fire in downtown Batavia over at the corner of River and Wilson and the Chamber of Commerce Office, in which a citizen who was living in the building died in a basement apartment. And I got down there and this, this basement was really rolling. They had flames coming out of every window. And he was then a black hat fireman, but Chief, now Chief Banker and Lieutenant Lyons of our department found out that there was a victim inside this burning building. And without any fear for themselves, they barreled into the building fully involved. And I just held my breath as I saw this happening. And within a couple, less than a minute, they brought him out on their backs and we got him outside and he subsequently did pass away. But they got the gentleman out of the building before he was literally almost cremated in there because it was really a bad fire. And I always remember, that was one of the great heroic moments in the Batavia Fire Department. And I just wanted to share that with the council and the community that when we lose Chief Banker tonight, he's going with a legacy here of somebody who really has risen to the occasion on moments when Batavians were in need. And I'm sure the citizens of Janesville, Wisconsin are going to find that virtue in you in your days ahead up there. So Chief, on behalf of the citizens of Batavia, I have a plaque that says, City Batavia, Randy, our banker, in appreciation of 26 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Batavia and the Batavia Fire Department, August 24th, 1989 to January 4th, 2016, and signed by myself as mayor. Thank you.
Just real quick, it wasn't just me and Tim Lyons and there's Ed Jenkowsis. Yeah, there was a couple other people there that, on that side. Can't take all the credit for it, but that was a tough night. But first of all, I just want to thank my family. They weren't all able to make it, my father and my brother and my friends that have showed up. It's truly humbling. And I just wanted to thank all the members of the Batavia Fire Department for what you've done for me. You guys have been with me throughout a lot of stuff and I just want to thank all of each of you for everything. A very professional organization and you guys are the best. Men and women are the best. City Council, please don't forget about them because statistics will show you will need them one time in your life. So please take care of the fire department and hopefully that time will not be a serious event. Third, I do want to thank the backbone of the Batavia Fire Department. This person never gets recognized, but this person truly, truly is the backbone of the fire department. And that's Cheryl Cowyer, our administrative assistant over there. She, she does. She keeps Chief Dyke in check and keeps all the men and women doing what they're supposed to be doing. And she never gets any credit, but she truly is the backbone of the department and, and I'll miss her greatly. So the final thing I'd like to do is, is council. I've, I was talking to the mayor today. The only person that's been here longer than, than me is the, the mayor. And I've worked with a lot of council members and a lot of staff. I've learned from everyone. I've learned goods, I've learned bads, and I, I want to thank the council for all their time and everything they try to do to make things right for the fire department and the city as a whole. But thank you.
Okay. Fortunately, we have some appointments to make to the Batavia Paid on Call Fire Department. I'd ask the chief to make those announcements and then I'll make a, ask for a motion of confirmation of my appointment.
Yeah, we have two new paid on call to swear in tonight. Could Joseph Biellas and Dell Tera Tully please come forward? Joseph, raise your hand. Joseph lives in Aurora. He is a basic operations firefighter and a paramedic. And Dell? There you go. You put your hand down. He'll swear in. Dell lives in Campton Hills. He has an associate's degree in fire science. He's a basic operations firefighter and an EMT.
Okay, guys. We have you walk up here in the middle of the room here because we've got a big time to be here. And have you over here and say this direction. If you raise your right hands and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Joseph.
Haven't been appointed.
Have.
To the position of paid on call recruit.
Paid on call recruit.
With the David Fire Department.
With the David Fire Department.
And the county of Cannon DuPage.
County of Cannon DuPage.
Do some, I swear.
Do some, I swear.
That I support the Constitution and United States.
Support the Constitution and the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid on call recruit.
To the position of paid on call recruit.
With the David Fire Department.
With the David Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Your right hand, you go.
Okay. Moving to item number 12, which is Ordinance 16-01, approving the West Town redevelopment Alderman Brown, do you have this one?
Do, Your Honor. Thank you. I'll start it out and then I'm going to turn it over to Chris Aiston as he has spent an enormous amount of time pulling all this together and, and working on it along with the rest of the staff and plan commission and everyone. But since Chris did spend so much time on it, I thought he should just bring it on home and finish it up. So ordinance, these next three ordinances all are related to the West Town TIF establishment. Ordinance 16-01 is the approval of the West Town redevelopment project. 1602 will be the designation of the West Town redevelopment project. And 1603 will be the adopting of the tax increment financing for the West Town redevelopment project. I'll just make a couple of comments and then I'll turn it over to Chris. We did go through all the proper procedures for notification of all the residents within the area, or all the businesses, all the property owners within the area. We did have the public hearings that are required. We did go through the plan commission process and then we took it on into the committee of the whole for, for the comments there and, and consideration there. The community was very involved in this in the very beginning, which was very good. They had their input. There were a lot of changes made as they did have their comments and input heard by the, by the committee. So I feel as though that it was a very good process and staff and the, and the property owners all worked very well together on it. We've got a good product to come out of it. So I will turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Alderman Brown, Council, Mr. Mayor. As the alderman indicated tonight, is the final approval of those three ordinances that he mentioned. Excuse my raspy voice. But the, the thing that's so neat really about TIF is that it's really the marriage of, of good land use planning and, and fiscal policy in order to create good development and redevelopment for the community. And it's, it, all the processes that Alderman Brown mentioned were followed according to statute. And it's now ready to be enacted as of this month. And then you will proceed with the 23 years of the term. There has been some things that have transpired since the public hearing as well as since the committee as a whole met and considered. And that's just letting you know that staff has been involved with some dialogue with the school district. As you know, the TIFs primarily in town, well, two of the three TIFs are for the central business district, which is primarily business commercial oriented redevelopment opportunities. The third TIF is just the library. But this TIF is unique with respect and comparison with the others is that it's a mixed use plan, as you know, and it does involve residential development pursuant to the land use plan that's a part and parcel of the TIF program. And because of that, because it does involve residents, we have engaged conversations with the school district to ensure that they are part of the process as we move forward on a redevelopment by redevelopment basis, to ensure that we have a reasonable and a fair way to keep them whole as potentially new students do come into the district. And the statute does have a set aside provision so that when there are new residences and particularly new students that are brought into redevelopment areas, that they be accounted for so that the burden doesn't fall overly, overly so with the school district. So just letting you know, those conversations have begun and they will continue to happen. And, and more importantly, on a case by case basis, as we recognize what redevelopments will occur, we will be accounting for the potential of new students within the TIF. So with that said, I just offer an opportunity to answer any questions that you may have and then thereby close it out and recommend that the three ordinances be adopted.
Any questions? Guess you don't have any questions.
Well, I'm neither a fireman nor am I Santa Claus, so it's not, it's just another doing business. But no questions, that's all I have.
I move for approval of Ordinance 16-01, approving the West Town TIF redevelopment project.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Ordinance 16-01, the approval of the West Town redevelopment project. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 16-01 is approved. Twelve yes, no nos, two absent. Moving then to item number 13, which is Ordinance 16-02, designating West Town redevelopment project area. Alderman Brown?
My move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Ordinance 16-02, designating West Town redevelopment project area. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 16-02 is approved. Twelve yes, no nos, two absent. All right. Moving to item number 14, which is Ordinance 16-03, adopting tax increment financing for West Town project. Alderman Brown?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Ordinance 16-03, adopting tax increment financing for the West Town redevelopment project. Any discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
Just, I have a quick question for you. Do we have to have, for this TIF to go through, we have to have the approval of all the, of the taxing bodies?
Not necessarily. What, what happens in order for the TIF to be considered, there first must be a convening of the joint review board. And at that meeting, all of the affected taxing bodies are called in to discuss, for presentations made about the TIF. The TIF is discussed in general and specific terms. And at that time, the taxing bodies are offered an opportunity to vote, to either recommend against or in favor of the TIF. There was a joint review board held, I believe it was November 3rd. At any rate, it was early in November. From that board meeting, the, there was a recommendation of approval with one dissenting vote. It was not unanimous, but they have made their recommendation and that was brought before the hearing and in front of you tonight. So your question is specifically, do they have to approve? They don't necessarily have to approve, but they do have to consider and make a recommendation. They're an advisory body in the process.
I guess then the point I was trying to make, I guess, is basically just, you know, in our town where we have our, some different, other TIFs, is the taxing bodies have all worked together to, to, to make, to, to help our town move forward. And I just would want to say thanks to the other taxing bodies and, and show our appreciation to them.
Yeah, they're, they're an integral part of the process.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll then on Ordinance 1603.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Moving then to item number fifteen, which is approval of a Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street special event, celebrate success February fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman, ATAC?
Yeah, the Batavia Police Department conducted an updated investigation on background check into Main Street and their executive director, Jamie Sam, for this one-day temporary Class F liquor license to be held on Thursday, February fourth, at Interiors for Business, and they found nothing that would prevent us or preclude us from granting this, and they, Main Street's also asked for the fee to be waived. So I am, I move that the city council approve the application for the Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street for their special event on Thursday, February fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of the Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street for February fourth, two thousand and sixteen, with a waiver of the fee.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Botterman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the license is twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to sixteen, the administrators' report, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know if anyone here noticed tonight, but the, most of the Riverwalk type lights have been installed along Houston Street. They look very nice. You might take a look on your way home, and citizens who haven't been in this area at night might take a ride down here. It looks very nice. There are still a couple of actual lights to be put up for the purpose of traffic, and those are much taller lights, but there are very few of those in the River, the Riverwalk lights are the important ones, I think, for the pedestrian scale of the area, so if you'll take a look at those. Christmas trees will be picked up this week and next week on people's regular waste pickup days. There's no sticker needed. Please, you need to remove lights, tinsel, ornaments, anything artificial needs to be off the trees, so they'll be picked up. If you aren't able to get it out this week or next week, then you can put it out on a normal waste day, but you will have to put a sticker on it. And wreaths and garlands are not part of this program. Those need to go into the normal garbage containers. The process to find the next deputy fire chief has begun. We have five internal candidates. Human Resources and Chief Dyke have prepared a good, solid process to fill Randy Banker's position. They're already starting with the, I think the first activities start at the end of next week, and I think that there'll be a decision within the next thirty days at the outside for that position. We had Alderman Brown sent out a memo a few days ago, and I know Alderman Botterman has been asking for some process so that the council could come up with a list of discussion topics. As I look at, and of course, our schedule is kind of compressed now because of the, because of the search activities for the administrator replacement, as well as losing a committee of the whole meeting because of Martin Luther King Junior Day. But it occurs to me, really, both of those kind of comments and requests are really all part of what is supposed to be, or should be, part of the strategic planning discussion. That's when the city council determines what its real policies are for the staff to implement. What I'd like to propose is the staff will get together and come back to you on the February second Cow meeting and represent a kind of a process, and we'll certainly ask for your input before that, but a process to look at that. We're a little over two years into the strategic plan, which is a five-year plan, and so this is a good time to look at that. And if we could aim for possibly March twenty-ninth, that's a fifth Tuesday, and just devote that entire evening to the process of fine-tuning the strategic plan and the, some of the implementation plans in there, then at least that's what we'd like to propose. So if you could think about that, give us some reactions to that, and then we'll put out something, make a little presentation on February second about a formalized process, and then just kind of go from there. But that way, it will be more of a formal process, and I don't think we can have discussions about the more important policy things without looking at our, your actual policy document. So, I don't know if that makes sense to you, but if it does, we'll start working on it.
Sounds really great, from my perspective. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Any other questions, the city administrator? Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown.
Just some meetings to announce, Your Honor. The committee of a whole meeting for tomorrow evening has been canceled. Next committee of a whole meeting we're going to have is going to be on January twelfth at seven-thirty. I think the majority of that meeting's going to be with the Bill Balling recruitment process report. The plan commission for January sixth is scheduled. It's going to be at seven-thirty. Few items on their agenda, subdivision regulations, and continued discussion on the sidewalk waiver, or how that's going to be handled in fill-in areas. And then the historic preservation is going to meet at five-thirty on January eleventh, and the bicycle commission is also scheduled to meet on January eleventh. So I have.
Any questions? Government Services, Alderman ATAC.
Yes, the only topic Government Services has for the upcoming meetings was referred to by Dave, and that's the Bill Balling recruitment process on January twelfth.
Okay. City Services, Alderman, move.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the January twenty-sixth committee of the whole meeting, City Services has five items: backhoe loader purchase, surplus property, east side property maintenance, truck chassis and equipment purchase, and sidewalk requirement changes. The last one, I think everybody should be ready to discuss.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll discuss on January twenty-sixth. We'll be discussing the process for the wastewater treatment project.
Okay. All right. Other business? Do we have other business from the council? All right, under the mayor's report, I'd like to ask everybody if you could emphasize, if it's all possible, to attend the meeting on January twelfth, which is next Tuesday night. Mr. Balling is coming, and he's anticipating that he'll be spending a couple hours with you. And what he wants to do is, as you know, he's been undergoing a significant interview process with a number of groups in the community about what they wanted to see in the, as far as a new city administrator, so he's got that to report. He's also putting together kind of a prospectus on what he wants to advertise Batavia's kind of looking for, and he wants to kind of go over that with all of you, is to get your input into that. And he says he's got, you know, through the whole interview process, he's gotten some interesting insights on what he senses are some of the community inner workings out there that maybe need to be focused as part of advertising for a new administrator, some of the strengths that Batavia has, and some of the issues that have been raised, and how we should go about handling some of those. So I think it could be a very interesting session, and I'd like to have as many of the council there for that as possible. The other thing I wanted to report on is that, hopefully by the end of January, we're going to have a meeting, we will be announcing the date here very quickly, to try to formulate some type of an anniversary celebration for June fourteenth, which is American Flag Day. And this is specifically very important to Batavia, because as I think most of you know, this coming June fourteenth will be the hundredth anniversary of American Flag Day. It was originally proclaimed by President Woodrow Wilson on June fourteenth, nineteen sixteen, and it was done after quite a campaign had been waged throughout the United States of America, largely headed up by a gentleman by the name of Dr. Bernard J. Segrand, who was a Batavia resident in nineteen sixteen and lived on South Batavia Avenue at the time when all this was done. And there's some interesting anecdotal history that surrounds it all, and the Historical Society and a number of other folks have been chatting about trying to do something of some significance, and specifically, maybe doing something that really specifically commemorates some type of artifact that will commemorate Dr. Segrand being here on the hundred, the date that it was selected a hundred years ago. This was his home, and that, excuse me, they'd like to talk about potentially doing a couple activities over the week there that surrounds June fourteenth, that would be commemorative and memorable to everybody, honoring the one-hundredth anniversary of American Flag Day, which appears to have centered in Batavia, Illinois, when it was all started. So we just think it's an interesting moment in our history that we have the opportunity to kind of highlight something that is very meaningful throughout the United States, but we have a little extra special claim to it, and something that we probably should be doing, something to kind of, you know, hold our head high and promote our good virtues, because we were a pretty significant influence in that whole Flag Day movement a hundred years ago. So we'll be, I'll get you the date, but if any of you are interested and want to come to the meeting that they're going to hold, probably is going to be in the last part of the month here, and then they'll start to plan some specific activities as a result of it. All right, with that out of the way, I guess we'll entertain a motion for an executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining, the purchase and sale of electrical power, and the setting of the price of land for sale. Alderman Brown, you want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Serone. Kirk, take a voice, a roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Botterman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Okay, the motion's approved, eleven yes, one no, two absent. So we will enter executive session, take a couple seconds for the clerk to change your tape and take a quick breather.
A partner in the General Block Law Firm, who is being retained to review the city's transition from a regulated electric market into its current position in an open market, and to advise the city on how to best achieve the goal of a balanced and diversified energy portfolio going forward. This is something that obviously the city's been wrestling with over the past several years, and will continue to wrestle with. So the, bringing the consultants in who have ties into more resources, more creative ability in terms of developing options and creative scenarios to guide us as we go forward, as we transition from where we've been into the future, and they will be there as consultants to guide us as we go. And that is with the goal of having a diversified electric portfolio at the end of the day. So that's basically what we're doing tonight, what's presented before us.
So I would entertain a motion then for the approval of Resolution sixteen dash zero-three dash R.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of Resolution sixteen dash zero-three dash R. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Botterman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Resolution sixteen dash zero-three dash R is approved, twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.